Good evening. Let's see here. Okay, pleasure of allegiance, please. Dave, you're up.
Pleasure of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the one that stands one nation in one land, and for this will be a justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Padraig Bean.
Here.
Douglas Beebe.
Here.
John Fairchild.
Here.
Christopher Gadway.
Here.
Patty LaFlem. Ed Marin.
Here.
Nicole Pupour. Here. Richard Sears.
Here.
David Trudeau.
Here.
All right. And we have a call. Dave isn't here yet. Approval of the agenda. Resolved that the active superintendent of schools were commenced to the Board of Education to approve the agenda. Motion, please.
Motion, Greg.
Second?
David.
David. Discussion on the agenda? Questions? All in favor? All right, motion passes. Does anyone here for public comment? All right, we'll move on forward. Reports. Business manager.
I just have one quick report and then our budget hearing will happen at seven. The bathrooms for the sporting field are now operational.
Nice.
We're going to be getting those opened up. Plumbing and electrical is completed. The paving is done. So we'll get the handicap grant out when all of this is done. And I just wanted to see if everybody got heads up that we're functional.
Nice.
That's good.
Excellent.
Are those, how would those, how would those work for activities on the weekends? Because sometimes we have events, not like games, but there are, there are groups to use it that we can tell kids participate in, whether it's, I don't know. How does that work with availability for those bathrooms?
Well, if it's a school-run event or as long as we have someone here, we'll have someone here to unlock and lock and backup. They're not going to be left open at all times, obviously.
Right, right.
For bandwidth and purposes. But if we have a function going on, the whole point is we want it to be open and available.
That's great. Anybody have questions for Jen?
Great job in getting that done.
Sorry to slow on the button.
There's no need to apologize. Everybody is appreciative.
Yes, they work well. There's six units, so I think it'll get rid of the board hogs.
Great job. Thank you.
Okay. Committee reports. We have audit committee.
Oh. My computer pulled up. Do you already have it up? Can you get it real quick? Oh my dear. I don't remember the date. So we met on April 25th and we reviewed March and April? February, March?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Any surprises?
Yes, we reviewed February, March financial reports. Always a lot of talk about the food program. Breakfasts and lunches served were up 38% for breakfast and 14 and a half for lunch from previous year. I mean, that's just something that's just gotten back to normal. Snack program's been reinstated. Over 230,000 snacks being served through March. We discussed the, how the school has the program for receiving free meals and minutes, everything was approved and we have another meeting coming up. It's the end of May. Any questions? There's nothing, nothing substantial came out of that.
No surprises?
Yeah.
Audit? Awesome. All right. Minutes as presented. Resolved that the active superintendent of schools were commenced to the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. Motion, please.
Motion, Rick.
Rick. Second?
I'll second, Nicole.
Nicole. Any discussions, questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolved that the active superintendent of schools were commenced to the Board of Education to approve the CSC, CPSC, and 504 recommendations dated 9/5/9/23. Motion. John. Second? Chris. Any discussion, questions on these? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Consent agenda. Resolved that the active superintendent of schools were commenced to the Board of Education that the following resolutions of this consent agenda, resignations, and appointments being are hereby approved. Need a motion?
A motion, Nicole.
Nicole, second?
Second, John.
John. All right. Any discussion, questions on resignations, appointments, instructional, all the personnel? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolved that the active superintendent of schools were commenced to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, unsealing and opening the ballot boxes and contracts senior clerk being are hereby approved. Motion?
Motion, Rick.
Rick. Sears? Second?
Second, Greg.
Greg? Any questions or discussions on any of this? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Please, please. What's that?
Moving right along.
Moving right along. All right. Financial. Resolved that the active superintendent of schools were commenced to the Board of Education that the following resolutions on this consent agenda, financial reports, and donation being are hereby approved. Motion, please.
A motion.
Nicole, second?
Rick.
Rick. Any discussion before we vote on this? Roll call, please.
Padraig Bean.
Yes.
Douglas Beebe.
Yes.
John Fairchild.
Yes.
Christopher Gadway.
Yes.
Patty LaFlem. Ed Marin.
Yes.
Nicole Pupour.
Yes.
Richard Sears.
Yes.
David Trudeau.
Yes.
Additional items to discuss? So we have a reorganizational meeting in July. So this one is the one where a lot of stuff happens, we organize, vote, new leadership, whatever you want. We don't have a date for this yet. So I guess question is, what's wrong with doing it the same, like Tuesday?
That's up to you guys. That's every year has to be, it's decided.
All right.
Does that have to be before the board meeting?
No, it is before. It'll be at the board.
So July, well, the third is right before the fourth, so we probably don't want to do that. 10th, 7th?
What's the second to that?
Is 11th. So that could work with, what does anybody say? All right?
Yep.
July 11th will be that day. Always stay consistent. Does anyone have any additional items that they want to bring up, additional items?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I wanted to discuss whatever our current, and Chelsea, thank you very much for sending me some comments on it, but discuss our current policy, procedure, protocols for doing exit interviews for staff.
Well, why don't we let Chelsea, and Jen, if you guys want to go into the process. I know we have documents that are given to every staff, right?
Yes. Anybody who resigns or retires gets the document. When it's returned, it's reviewed, given to administrators that would be appropriate.
So that document only goes to administrators and to you? Do you always get it or just the immediate supervisors?
No, I believe the superintendent received all of them and then the supervisors.
And so as part of procedure to date, Chelsea, I don't know if you've seen, so does that superintendent? Because from what I recall, we've talked about some of them, but not all of them. But I don't think we have a policy that says that we should go through all of them always.
Sure.
Is there, is there a face-to-face? Can that be requested or not requested? Or does that have to?
There have been face-to-face exit interviews before with the superintendent or?
If requested by the individual or?
Yes, or sometimes there's follow-up based on what they've submitted.
Okay.
Is, is there any mechanism inside of the, like you said, it may or may not be an actual policy, but is there any mechanism that allows for staff to either give comment to the board, for the board to review exit interviews, or for the staff to have an in-person exit interview with the board, depending on the situation?
Right now, not that I'm aware of. Right now, the stopgap is the superintendent's. I don't know if we want to modify that. Because we have had conversations in the past about trying to improve transparency.
If it's not part of the current policy, is there anything in place right now that would prevent that from happening?
Maybe, maybe not. So, so as far as leadership, so the boundaries we have to be aware of are, we hire people to be in charge of certain areas, right? And, and just like when a superintendent is responsible for the administrators, the board should not really interfere with that because at the end of the day, if something's going on not well with the administrator, that's their responsibility. They're the ones that should, that we should deal with. As soon as we start circumventing that, then the leadership process breaks down and that goes all the way down from superintendent to principals, et cetera.
Would there be any, any issue if something like, if something like that was to be requested? Do you have a meeting that was similar to, say, like a committee of nine meeting where you had administration and board to receive comment?
Well, I think an exit interview is different, right? So what you don't want, what we call single-point failure location, so that's where, where you don't have enough transparency, where only one person decides who gets the information, who doesn't.
Exactly.
So we want to, want to mitigate that. I don't know, maybe, Jack, you're here. Have you ever seen a process in any of the school districts where the information goes to the superintendent and then also gets, gets not necessarily reviewed by the board, but the board is made aware of every time just as an awareness condition?
That is usually done through an employee satisfaction survey or a climate survey or something of that nature. I think most employees do not expect their employment documents to be shared with the Board of Education. And I would say an exit interview, exit survey would be one of what they would consider an employment document. So, you know, if you wanted to, you could, you know, maybe use a one-to-four rubric on exit surveys and just have an aggregate of that data reported every, some period of time, six months, every 12 months. But, you know, I really, you know, a climate survey is really a way to let your constituents, your employees, know that that's what the board is looking for, you know? And again, that goes through the district office, but that's a little bit more, I think, of a way that people are going to be a little bit more blunt and give you more of their actual feelings. Because a lot of people, when they're doing an exit interview, exit survey, are going to say positive things because they want good referrals, they want to come back. Whereas if you've got an anonymous climate survey, that's a better way to get, I think, a more frank appraisal. And it's a different, it's a more complete set of questions.
Yeah, so we, I've been pushing for a similar strategic process like the way we do at CVS, right? And that gets staff to do a survey. They get their honest, whether you don't like it, you know, get the survey back. We're now about finally getting ready to, to get to that point, finally. So we've got to close in on that. What if, so that'll, that'll capture that component for all staff. What if, what if a, someone who's leaving wants the information to be given to?
If it's specifically requested by an individual?
Well, I mean, I would, if they're given a piece of paper and said, "Can you tell us what you think?" Because they certainly have the ability of forwarding to board members. I guess I'm not understanding.
It'd be just like anybody from the public who wanted to make a statement or address the school or the board, they would go through the proper channel. And if they're having an exit interview and they want us to know, they can write those, I mean, they can write to us.
The concern, the concern is, is that when you have a process where it's one person can shut it down and no one has the opportunity to find out why they left because the environment wasn't something they were happy about, whether right or wrong. You know, sometimes, sometimes people leave and maybe they needed to leave or whatever. I don't know. But if you have one person that's a stopgap, it could prevent information from coming through to everyone. So that's, I think, I think that might be the spirit of what you're talking about.
So I think that's definitely a part of it.
Okay.
I mean, you know, one part of it is, and I appreciate what you're saying, right? You know, some staff members, you know, they are going to say positive things, which may or may not actually reflect how they feel because of referrals or what have you. Some staff members may be interested in telling you their actual opinion when they leave, whether they are right or wrong. Obviously, those things need to be vetted. But yes, having a, having a single point where it stops with no oversight on top of that, to me, seems problematic.
Well, I actually think that because that is not, an exit interview is, you know, still part of the employment process. I mean, I really think the appropriate answer for someone who's a district administrator, talking to someone who's dissatisfied with their, you know, working conditions or their salary or whatever they may be, and said, "Pass this on to the Board of Education." I think the appropriate answer would be, "We treat these as part of your employment file and so we don't pass them along to the Board of Education, but you absolutely can, you know, forward your thoughts to the Board of Education." I mean, I really think it's a, it's a bit of a subversion of the confidentiality of employment that anybody's, you know, exit survey might be plucked and given to nine board members to review. I think that that's a very bad.
Practice, yeah.
You're saying if that was to be done just randomly?
Or even at the request of certain people. I think that the answer, actually, request is, you know, "You've met with me. If you want to share this with the Board of Education, I would, you know, you could go out." I didn't do that. But, you know, I don't pass these documents along, good or bad, to the Board of Education.
Fair enough.
Okay. So we just have to then make sure that there, that we have an existing process for open communication outside of that. And that's the, that's the survey that we're talking about?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay.
I mean, I, I've, over the years, been observing since that survey started at CBEs through the present. And, I mean, the climate, the feelings about the climate have come a long way and it's given people focus of areas to work on. You know, it's, and it's not just the people that are unhappy or the people that are leaving, it's the people that are staying, it's the whole community. And I, I think that that's been a really good culture builder at CBEs.
Okay.
Which, which brings back to your point about having the strategic plan, data gathering.
Right.
Making it even more important.
Anonymous, transparent.
Yes.
All right. Anything else you want to, you got that?
No. I thank you so much for clarifying.
Oh, my pleasure.
Anyone else? Questions, thoughts? All right. Anyone else for public comment? All right. And then the budget hearing is at 7:00. All right. So we'll go in executive session at least for the remainder of this, then we'll come back out for 7:00. Anyway, we don't waste any time. So I don't need to click pro 10 yet because we're going to be going and coming back out. So for the first session, resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss proposed opinion or current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of Civil Service Law. Motion, please.
Motion, Padraig.
Padraig Bean, second?
David.
David. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Going in at 6:37. Board returns to executive sess, out of executive session into regular board at 7:03. Something close to that. Motion, please.
A motion.
Nicole, second?
John.
John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. So now we're going into our budget. All right, we'll move out of the way.
I'll try to speak from over here because I know you can all hear me. I'm plenty loud. First, I'm going to, if anybody has heard, the state budget was finally approved, May 1st. It's supposed to be done by April 1st. One later. I'm just going to go over a few of the highlights of what, what went through, what did not go through. Our Foundation Aid is fully funded, that remained intact, which is excellent news. The high-impact tutoring set aside of the Foundation Aid that was supposed to be set aside for high-impact tutoring was voted down. So our Foundation Aid is our Foundation Aid. So we don't have to specialize that set aside. It is, can be used for what we need. Capital outlay, the hope it would be increased to the $250,000 instead of $100,000, that was also good. Increase in funding for the career technical education raises, high raising of both these equitable salaries, which we've been pushing for four years as well, was also not good enough to the budget. So those are two things we did like to have seen, but did not go through. Retirement waiver, they're just keeping that intact for right now. The budget extends our additional school year the ability of retirees receiving a state pension to be employed by schools or foci with no denomination of their, no detriment to their pension even after they earn $3,500. So the waiver's still on, coming out for next year, which is a good thing. And again, just going through some of the highlights. School financial transparency reporting. I'm sure you guys, the board has probably heard it and I know these administrators have heard it about tracking out rebuilding and where the expense is going. And I drive you guys absolutely crazy with that. That reporting is going away. Yeah. I'm very excited about that. It's a lot of work and it's very repetitive. They give these reports and then you do another report that verifies that report. And then there's another report that verifies those two reports and it's all the same information. So we're very happy with that going away too. There was some UPK increases across the state. Our UPK was increased last year, actually. So our UPK did not get another increase this year. But those are some of the main highlights. We are waiting, because the state budget did get approved, we're waiting for ELT to see if that, if that is in the state budget, we're waiting to see if it was set aside. We have an EMA up, so Elizabeth Winkle is our contact. We're waiting for her to respond back so we will know if we have that one coming forward as well. So that's just, that was just a little update. No, and just so you're aware, our, with it being approved, our revenue did go down by $16,000, which is not going to be a factor, one way or the other. But there was that minor change to our revenue. Some things went up a little bit, some things went down and that was $16,000.
Did your 30% change the foci and all that?
No. But $16,000, it, it doesn't. Any change on that? So, so with that, some of this is going to be very repetitive. I apologize. I'm not a lot. No numbers have changed, but I am willing to answer any questions. Our mission statement, which we've gone over, is the mission of the district and its communities to educate every individual to be a quality contributor to society itself. Again, this is what we went over the last time, three-part budget, 1.91% tax levy. We're staying under the cap, all good things. Under $17 for our tax rate. We're at 1631. Again, I think that's going to go down. Assessments, I don't know if anybody's gotten letters yet, are going up more than what they predicted, I think. So that tax rate will, I have full faith that tax rate will be going down. It will, I would guess it probably to be closer to $16,000. Your funding, grant, short-term stimulus aid, we've gone over all of that good stuff. 1631, which again, I think is going down. All of our grant monies, that's, you know, what we have at the moment. Again, this is everything we went over last time. Trying to get where this is, this is, well, fairly new. So this is the budget packet, that three-part budget packet that goes out and it's available for the community. Chelsea's got it, I've got it, it's all over the place if we need it, it's on the web. I'm just going to go over quickly the summaries. It compares last year, or this current year we're in 2223 to next year's budget. So as you can see, this year's budget was $49 million. We're now going to be at $52.7 million. It's an increase of 7.64% budget over budget. This is the admin budget where you can see, again, these are all, these numbers did not change from our budget meeting. I believe we had a, our budget meeting was in March or April. I can't remember.
April.
Was it April? So when we did our budget meeting, these numbers are the exact numbers that we went over line by line by line by line. So nothing has changed. I haven't changed anyplace since the last time we spoke. They are the exact same figures. Again, with the additions of everything we talked about. Capital, capital outlay. We are going to do some more B E S safety doors. Again, with it only being a hundred thousand dollars, we won't be doing a ton of doors. But Burn Your Car is here, they're going to be talking later. They'll be running that project as well. We'll be getting as many doors as we can out of our bid to do, to upgrade the doors. I don't think we'll get them done. I think there'll be still some more to do, but we're working. The busing proposition, we're getting four buses, we're trading or selling four buses. I think we're probably only going to trade two. I think we're going to sell two outright, they're not running, we're going to sell them apart. You see that in the paper as a sealed bid, that's what it's going to be for. And we get seventy-five percent of our monies back on those purchases. Capital project, we're going to be going into detail in just a minute. I'll be going over that with Burn Your Car with Mike and Sandra. They're going to help, they've got a really nice presentation. Is that it? Oh, the presentation for the capital project isn't up?
No, it's not attached to the end of it. It's a separate one.
Oh, separate one, okay. So that is the budget, like I said, nothing has changed. We've gone over this several times as far as the budget goes. I do want to go into a little more detail with the capital project. I'm going to ask Mike to speak, to start going over the nuts and bolts and the scope of the project. I'll discuss the finances again a little bit. And then we'll go over the timeline of what we're looking at as far as when it's going to start. And hopefully done, a lot of good stuff. And this is Mike from Burn Your Car. I don't know if anyone has, any of the board has met him yet. But we've been working very closely to get this project going.
Yeah. Go ahead, will you advance the slide?
I will.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, thanks for having us. I'm joined tonight with Sandy Dardanelli, one of my partners at the firm. Sandy's been instrumental on the hundred thousand dollar projects that you've executed over the past few years and more recently, the, the restaurants, pots that are just being turned over now. So she, I'm going to run through the scope of the project. I'll touch on the schedule and Sandy and I are here to answer any, any questions the board may have. But if, so I'll speak to the scope, general touch on the budget and the finance. And again, we'll wrap up. You'll remember, the last time I was here, I think it was in November, where we had kind of, we had finally gotten through the scope after three or four months of meetings with the administration and the facilities committee. And what we landed on, the major elements on this campus are, the major focus of the project here would be six additional classrooms on the elementary wing. You can see that there to the right. We're actually building seven, but we're losing one classroom within the building because when we, when we add the addition on the end, we're gonna, we're gonna have to cover up some windows. So that will become some type of internal storage space or some other function. So it's a six neck classroom addition to house the elementary grades. And then within the building footprint itself, additional pre-K classrooms would be distributed. Another large component of this would be to take down the two wooden storage structures that are way outside this facility and then create a parking lot directly in front here. And then the third major element is the cold storage building to be constructed over on the, off the end of the transportation facility. I've got some slides that depict that in greater detail. Back up one, there you go. So that shows the concept for the classification. You can see there's seven. But again, the one classroom on the, on the south side, planned south of the existing building would lose its, its windows, so that would no longer function as a seventy-seven square foot standard classroom. Additionally, the playground that's there will be reconstructed and enlarged and turned into a accessible playground, a creative playground. And you can see we've got a, kind of drawn a line, a fence line between the two wings to protect it. And then there is a basketball court there now, as I'm sure you're aware, that will be relocated to the left side there in the plan. Two the other way. This is the concept. We've got to get the civil engineers out here and meet with your facilities people to square this away. But the idea is that there'd be a parking lot directly in front of the facility, accessible spaces in and out, very similar to the loop you've got next door. And I think we're trying to get in about twenty spaces. There's a, there's a lot of land out there. Whatever the parking need is, we can accommodate it. Trying to keep, keep it focused in front of the building and keep the green space on the corner as open as possible.
I have a question on that. So while we're talking about this green space over here in parking lots, has there been any discussion with the town of Beadmentown or the town of Platsburg to put a right-hand turn lane at this four corners right here? That is a nightmare in the morning. When kids are getting dropped off through this loop up through here. If we're taking out both of these buildings, it would make sense to try to work and get that out into a two-lane, one going right, a left, and one going straight, and one going right. That is a nightmare. It's not bad in the summertime, in the spring. But in the wintertime, when that turns into a one-lane road, that's dangerous right there. I've been there a million times, dropping my kids off, where people just shoot across the road. If, I'm just saying, if we're taking down those two buildings, I hope there would be room to put another lane in there that would be a designated right-hand turn at that stop sign.
And that's going to be a town, we've got.
I, I totally understand that as a carry issue, but.
Yeah, so we, the plan is to talk to the townspeople, they would be willing, because they're the ones that are going to have to do that.
Right.
We can give them space, but they're the ones that are going to have to, have to do it because they're going to have a team and all of that stuff. But yes, that is a conversation that we plan to have with them.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you very much. What's the total time that our kids won't have access to the playground?
We're going to get to that, like, we're going to get to the timeline.
Okay. Then the third major component on this campus is the cold storage building. So this, this is not meant to be a maintenance facility by any means. It's, it's, the idea is it's going to be a, it's not heated, it'll be lit. Obviously, it'll have large openings, doors for whatever the needs are, whether it's furniture or short-term delivery materials before they're pushed out to the other facilities. But it's a twenty-five hundred square foot metal skin, metal roofed, slab-on-grade, wide-open space building for, for the convenience of the, for storage needs. And that's just a quick depiction of what it might look like. In addition to the, the major components that I just discussed, both cumberland head and this facility, we're going to be doing some interior work. And the scope was, was kind of culled from the building condition survey, which was executed a year and a half ago now. And the main focus at both facilities is improvements to mechanical systems and airflow in both facilities, able to pack cafeteria and kitchen. Right now, the way the kitchen, the kitchens work, you're not introducing air into those, fresh air, outside air into those spaces. So when the exhaust vents are operating and sucking air out of the cafeteria and actually through whatever open doors, might be the quarters. So the new system will actually bring, bring air into the hood. So you're not, you're not using, utilizing warm air for the space. It'll increase the, the comfort of the space in the, in the cafeteria and the kitchen. Especially by providing all that, that fresh air. So that, that's kind of the main focus in those, in both buildings. We're also going to be looking at any of the old classrooms and ventilators, whether they're at the windows or whether they're, they're in the ceilings. A lot of our dirty flushers are old and they're going to be replaced to increase the airflow. And then we can also improve the quality of the filtration that happens in those rooms. And you can see here at the main building, I think there's thirty-six of those kind of spotted around buildings along with the cafeteria work. In general construction wise, there's some odds and ends we want to take care of. Some of the things that the maintenance staff can't, can't, can't necessarily do themselves because of the, the techniques of the materials. We've got some exterior doors to replace, some concrete slabs and some torozov repair that will be taken care of. Cumberland, Cumberland Head, very similar. The mechanical improvements are almost identical. A different comment on the units, however, the kitchen and cafeteria, same concept. Additionally, there, we're going to replace some of the wall packs on the exterior of the building. There's some foundation, base brick repair spotted around the building. And then also on the interior, we'll replace any of the old water closets or lavatories, drinking pumps that have, were brought up to water conservative fixtures. That brings us into the budget.
More numbers. So we're looking at approximately eleven point one million dollar project, which we've, again, we've discussed this before. Structure costs, inflation, contingency, and incidental costs. This is very typical for any capital project you're going to do, this is what you're going to see. And those are the estimates that Burn Your Car has worked out for us. And this is what we're, we're starting. And as you can see, this is the breakout of what each item we're looking at is approximately going to cost. So you have the pre-K addition, the storage building, main building, V C S miscellaneous, and cumberland head miscellaneous. But it's all the mechanical. So that gives a breakdown of each item, a rough breakdown. And again, there's all your incidentals that are also included with that. And that's where we come up with the eleven point one million dollars. The project will have no impact on property taxes. Again, we've gone over that last meeting. All costs are covered by state building aid and current reserves. We are doing three point seven to five million out of our fund balance. We are doing a million dollars out of our capital reserve. And we're doing five hundred thousand dollars out of our federal funds. And this is a schedule done up by fiscal advisors. Christine helped me run this up. This is based on a lot of different things that, and these things change a little bit here and there. Interest rates affect this, our aid ratio affects this. But as of right now, I, I know this is really tiny, I'm sorry, some of you might have it in the packet. The average cost per year to the taxpayer is thirty-nine thousand. That's total for all the taxpayers in Beadmentown School District. So it, and that's with the interest rate what it is now and with our aid ratio what it is now. And that changes on a yearly basis. So really, when you come down to it, there's, there is no cost to the taxpayer. No additional cost. So with the reserves we are going to use. And then this is our project headline. We are already at the voter referendum, so we're about a quarter of the way there. So a budget vote on Tuesday. This is a proposal upon that ballot. If that gets voted through, we move on to the design and development phase, which takes approximately a year.
About a year.
About a year. And once we're there, then we have S E D approvals. Again, depending on what's going on. How, how, how are they moving along right now?
It could be four months, it could be six months.
Right. And it all depends on who they have available and how many people they have available to look at your projects. And then we do bid openings. We're hoping to do bid openings by November of twenty twenty-four. Award our contracts and then construction planning. And we plan to start work in April of twenty twenty-five. Final completion, we're hoping to have by September twenty twenty-six. Now, if any of you have ever been through any projects, this would be lovely if it all happens this way. But these are our estimated timelines. There are things that happen throughout a capital project that sometimes completely out of our control. But this is our, our hope and what we're going to push for is what you see here. So the kids would be without a playground for approximately a year. We have talked a lot about using our field, using the tennis courts as areas, using, you know, different. Actually, I talked to Stacy today. You know, maybe getting some P T O involvement and buying different games that kids can use outside on the field. I'm not going to say it's not going to be inconvenient, it's going to be inconvenient, but there is no way around this. The end result's going to be really good, the year is going to be tough. But I think we can all put our heads together and come up with some solutions that, that will help make it a little easier. And in the end, we're hoping to have.
There's no way around it, or there's no way around it that we have budget?
I don't want children playing in constructions on that.
Okay, I, I just thought one more, is there any other space where we could put temporary playground equipment?
We plan, I, I don't, I, I mean, we could buy temporary playground equipment. I think that's kind of.
Or, or remove what we have and temporarily install it somewhere else in some case.
It doesn't work that way. When you install a playground, it has to be, it's a liability. It has to be done right or you don't do it at all. So we'd be paying twice to put it, I don't know where. But we're hoping to come up and use our field, use the tennis courts, use other areas. Use the football field right here, which is great, great space.
So the kids will have, the idea is that give the kids full access to what we, to the field that we built for the last capital project?
Well, I can't guarantee full access because our gym.
Well, yeah, I know we have classes, we have games, like, stuff like that.
But we're going to, we're going to definitely put our heads together as a team and we're going to figure it out and do the best we can. It's not, it's not going to be perfect. It certainly won't be perfect. We're losing a playground for a year. So that's not, that's not a perfect world. But in order to get the new playground we need and to get the classrooms we need, this, this is what we're going to do. So is there any other questions?
No more questions?
No more questions.
All right, we're going to go right back into executive session. Result of the Board of Education appoint Mr. Cole Pupour as clerk pro temp. Motion, please.
Motion.
Chris, second, John. Is that right?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. And result of the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss proposed pending current litigation, collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of Civil Service Law. And we do not, Jackie and Tony will be coming in as our attorneys. And we do not know if there's going to be a resolution afterwards. And that's it. Seven twenty-nine, we don't, seven twenty-eight, but we don't need that time. We need the time going in when we come back in. All right. Take a quick break.
Need a motion?
Oh, yes, need a motion. Thank you. See, that's why you're there. Second.
Reddick.
Reddick, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.